Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, excuse me, Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, Public Work Session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Parentana.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. The Board met in executive session on May 5th, 2021, to discuss matters relating to school safety and security. Again this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Are there any announcements, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
No announcements. This brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentana. The Board will find May's enrollment report in Board Docs. Nothing exceptional on that report. Enrollment is stable. What's somewhat exceptional is next year's enrollment. We're still missing some kindergartners as far as registration. So we would much rather know who they are and what school they'll be going to in advance so we can appropriately plan and staff instead of being surprised. So those who are hearing me, if you can look for little, little kids, they're about this tall. They move around a lot. Sometimes they're sticky. If you can get them to register so we can find them and appropriately staff, it'd be greatly appreciated. Moving on to our academic model, we are, as you know, all in. The numbers in the county as far as incident rate, last week through the Department of Health at the state level, they reported Bucks County's incident rate at 105 per 100,000. That is the lowest it's been since the beginning, the end of October, 2020. There was a high in there in December at 514. So we seem to be on the decline, and those cases in the district match that decline as well. We have over 90% of our elementary school students in school, over 85% of our middle school students, and over 70% of our high school students. So our health and safety plan and our academic models are proceeding as planned, and we're hoping for no more curveballs through the rest of the year. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that our comprehensive plan has left the stalled position because of the pandemic and beginning to move forward. A leadership team met and drafted a outline. We'll then meet on next Tuesday, Election Day, with a steering committee to further develop that outline. It will involve needs assessments of our staff, our students, and our families, and it will plot our course forward over the next three years. To give you some highlights of that, right now, at least in draft form, before it gets to the steering committee and without a whole lot of needs assessment going on yet, it has an extra element from our existing strategic plan. We have modern, safe schools and campus environments as a big theme. We have viable and guaranteed curriculum and instruction as a second theme. A third theme is a student-centered, parent-informed, community-focused theme. And then finally, a sustainable professional culture. So we're hoping we can continue with that and have that in place for the Board and public to see early next fall, and then begin doing the good work that makes it come true. Mr. Parentana, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This brings us to our first public comment period. Are there any signups?
Joshua Thomas?
Sir, state your name, area in which you reside, your occupation, and you have three minutes. Please no personal attacks.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Joshua Thomas. I live in Langhorne, PA. I am a carpet cleaner and a server at Cracker Barrel. And this is my first board meeting, so I have a kindergartner. And I just had just a concern, just for face masks. I'm like, kind of like a health nut, and I do, you know, appreciate everything that Nishamani's doing. I think Nishamani is doing a great job. And I just kind of would desire to not have the kids wear masks. That was just my concern. I just don't like the fact that they keep, you know, we all know about the whole things going on with the differences between mask, no mask, and all the vaccines and all, but just a concern that I would like to have the option for my daughter to possibly not wear a mask, or if other parents want their kid to wear a mask or not, but that was just my concern for today. So, thank you.
Dr. McGee can address that in Board Comment at the end of the meeting.
No other signups.
Is anyone else in attendance wishes to approach the podium for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our resolutions. Mr. Sullivan, could you read 2.01?
2.01, 2021-22 Proposed Final Budget. Whereas 24 PS 6-687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the Board of School Directors prepare a proposed final budget at least 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget, and to make the proposed final budget available to public inspection at least 20 days prior to the date set for the adoption of the final budget. And whereas 24 PS 6-687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the President of the Board of School Directors certify to the Pennsylvania Department of Education that the proposed final budget was prepared, presented, and made available for public inspection using the uniform form furnished by the Department of Education. And whereas the Board of School Directors has the 2021-22 Proposed Final Budget of the School District in the required form and desire that the same be made available for public inspection as required by law. Whereas the total revenues and expenditures equal $187,620,221, and the millage rate equals 1,65.6, meaning there is not a tax increase included in the proposed final budget for the 2021-22 year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby adopts the attached 2021-22 Proposed Final Budget presented at this May 11, 2021, public meeting, and the same shall be made available for public inspection, be made available for duplication to any person on request, beginning on May 12, 2021, and that the President of the Board of School Directors is authorized to issue the certification to the Pennsylvania Department of Education required by 24 PS 6-687. Be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors will adopt the 2021 Final Budget of the School District at the public meeting to be held on June 22, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. A motion's been made on 2.01. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I would just like to comment that this budget--
Cover it.
I would just like to comment that this budget has been a work in progress, and I think that we did an outstanding job with it based on everything that we've had to do, dealing with the pandemic and all the upgrades that we needed to do. And for those of you that have come to the meetings, you know, I fought very hard for no tax increase, so I'm pleased that that is in there, and we will be able to move the district forward in the right direction going forward next year.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, would you read 2.02, please?
I think Marty and I changed chair heads this-- 2.02, Nishamani High School Sports Complex Renovations Land Development Agreement. Whereas the district desires to upgrade the athletic facilities at the Nishamani High School, and whereas these upgrades shall include new surfaces for the softball field, baseball field, track surface, Harry E. Frank Stadium, and a new field with lights where the existing practice football field exists, and an expanded new tennis court facility. And whereas the district also desires to create a new entrance to the Harry E. Frank Stadium with concessions and a new field house, which will include new restroom facilities. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the attached proposal from ELA Sport/ELA Group, Inc., subject to review and approval by the district solicitor and administration, and to guide the district through land development with Middletown Township, along with preparing, assisting the district to go to bid as required by Pennsylvania law for the new upgraded field at Nishamani High School.
Thank you. A motion's been made for 2.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Mr. Irwin, could you just give a brief description of the exact process by which the Board's entering into this project?
The process of how we got to here?
Well, the process of what we're actually doing with this action item.
Yes, this action item is going to allow ELA to engineer the site so that we have an understanding of the water infiltration, as well as the NPDES permits that are required for land development, so that when this process is over, we will have the scope of all the fields approved by the Middletown Township Land Development. We will have them be able to go to bid to move this forward. One of the problems we have faced up to this point is that this is such an encompassing redesign of our facilities there, that we were having a hard time getting our ducks in a row, if you will, because as we looked forward, we weren't sure how the schedule was going to be. So we have regrouped at this point to get us to land development so that at which time we get approval from the township, we can then begin to scope out the sequence of how these fields will be redone.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Allen, 2.03, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bring a motion to the floor. 2.03, Approve the Amended GISA Maple Middle Point Project. Whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors desires to move forward with additional scope items of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project as it relates to the replacement of heating, ventilating, and/or air conditioning equipment in the amount of, was it 1,497,281, related to energy-efficient measures at the Maple Point Middle School, 2250 Langhorne Yardley Road, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, 19047, all of which is covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Act Agreement, Amendment 7. And whereas the Nishamani Board of School Directors approved the appointment of Reynolds Energy Services, Inc., for the 2015 GISA Agreement, along with six subsequent amendments, adding additional scopes of work to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project throughout the district. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors accepts the amended proposal from Reynolds Energy Services, Inc., for amended number seven, amendment number seven, and the revised contract sum shall be, is that $44,111,982, with additional scope items for amendment number seven, for heating, ventilating, and/or air conditioning equipment related to energy efficiency measures at the Maple Point Middle School, 2250 Langhorne Yardley Road, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, 19047, all covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement, and defined as energy savings guaranteed under PA Act 39, 57, and 77 guidelines. Be it further resolved that the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, Solicitor, and Administrator of the School District are hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the School District and under its corporate seal to execute the amended contract, subject to review and approval by the district solicitor and administration, and such other documents and affidavits, and to take such further action as may be required by law and necessary or desirable to effectuate the aforesaid GISA Amendment 7 for Maple Point Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 2.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Boyle, could you read 2.04, please?
2.04, Staff Settlement Agreement. Whereas a release and settlement agreement has been prepared by the district solicitor in connection with non-professional employee Z. Now therefore, be it resolved, the release and settlement agreement prepared by the district solicitor relative to non-professional employee Z is hereby approved, and an irrevocable resignation of employee Z is accepted, both with an effective date of May 31, 2021. And the Board President, Secretary, and Administration are authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms of the release and settlement agreement on behalf of the School District.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. A motion's been made on 2.04. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by, who was it? Say again? Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Marington, would you read 2.05, please?
2.05, Our Administrative Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following administrative appointments. Should I read the name yet? It's for Jason Bowman, who will be replacing Rob McGee as the Assistant Superintendent, Director of Secondary Education in the District Office.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. A motion's been made on 2.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. In attendance, we have Mr. Bowman and his wife. Mr. Bowman, if you would wish, you can approach the podium and say a few words if you would like to.
Hi, good evening. Just want to really thank the Board for the opportunity. Growing up in Nishamani and living here, raising my family here, it's always been a dream to come work here. Tremendous, tremendous school district, tremendous superintendent with a great cabinet. I'm excited to come in and learn from them and continue the work that I've started elsewhere and hopefully bring some of that here to Nishamani. So, thank you again for the tremendous opportunity.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Bowman.
Welcome to the team, Jay.
Mr. Kovitz, would you read 2.06, please?
Sure. I'd like to put forward a motion, 2.06, Retirement, Resignation, End of Assignment. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following administrative retirements, resignations, end of assignment. There is one name on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, 2.07, please.
2.07, Certificated Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there are three names.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.07. May I have a second? Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me. Opposed abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, could you do 2.08, please?
Certified Summer Program Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following summer program appointments for certified staff. There are three names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.08. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan, was that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Sullivan, can you read 2.09, please?
2.09, Certified Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for certified staff, and there are three names on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.09. May I have a second? Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Allen, 2.10, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.10. Certified Returns from Leave. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised leaves of absence for certified staff, and there are three names on the list.
Motion's been made on 2.10. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Boyle, 2.11, please?
I'd like to make a motion for 2.11, Certified Retirement, Resignation, End of Assignment. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirement, resignation, end of assignments for certified staff, and there are four names listed.
Motion's been made on 2.11. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I'd just like to bring the attention, we have one member of the support staff here retiring after 28 years of service to Nishamani. I wish you well in your retirement and the Board and the District. Thank you for your service. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Marington, 2.12, please.
2.12, Support Staff Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for support staff, and there are six names on the list.
Thank you. A motion's been made on 2.12. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Kovitz, would you read 2.13, please?
Yes, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve 2.1.3, Support Staff Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for support staff. There are five names on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. A motion's been made on 2.13. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Cirillo, would you do 2.14, please?
2.14, Support Staff Return from Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following returns from leaves of absence of support staff with one name mentioned.
Motion's been made on 2.14. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. Motion passed, excuse me. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Where we at here? 2.15. Mrs. Hollenbach, would you read that, please?
2.15, Support Staff Revised Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following returns from leaves of absence of support staff. There's one name listed.
Motion's been made on 2.15. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Allen, 2.16, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring a motion to the table. 2.16, Support Staff Retirement, Resignation, and End of Assignment. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirement, resignation, or end of assignments for support staff. There are seven names on that list.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 2.16. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just like to point out that we have two members of our support staff. Mrs. Amelia Gavin with 18 years of service, and Mrs. Linda Haverbatch with 21.6 years of service, which will be leaving us, and we appreciate your service to Nishamani, wish you well in your retirement. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight to zero. That concludes the Board's action items for this evening. At our next public board meeting, items for approval will be 3.01, Annual Appointments for the 2021-22 School Year, miscellaneous items for 2021-22 School Year, 3.02, Appointment of Treasurer-- I'm sorry, 3.03, Appointment of Treasurer, 3.04, Appointment of Board Secretary and Assistant Board Secretary, 3.05, Contracted Services for 2021-22, 3.06, Bucks County Technical High School Budget for 2021-2022, Budget Transfers, excuse me, 3.07 Budget Transfers, 3.08 Exonerations, 3.09, Sunday Facility Usage, 3.10 Bids, 3.11, Out-of-District Placements, 3.12 Student Settlement Agreements, 3.13, BCI Number 22 Special Education Contract Services for 2021-2022, 3.14, ESY and ELL Summer Programs, 3.15, Summer Projects Employment, 3.16, Procurement Procedures and Transaction Review Consultation Services. Brings us to Section 4, our committee reports. Do you have an update, Mrs. Hollenbach?
Our next Business Operations Meeting is Tuesday, June 1st, in the boardroom here at 6:30. All are welcome. I'm not expecting any changes with the budget, so we will be discussing other things moving forward. 6:30, June 1st.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. Educational Development, Mrs. Bowman's absent this evening. Does someone have to report in her absence?
There's no new meeting scheduled.
There's no additional educational development meetings planned for this school year. Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. 4.03, Facilities and Planning. Mr. Sullivan?
We had a meeting last week. We had presentations from Spiesel and-- We had presentations from Spiegel and Site Logic regarding the new school to be built on this property, and that's moving forward. And we also discussed the sports complex and the land development agreement, which we approved tonight, and there are no more meetings this school year.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. 4.04, policy. Mrs. Boyle.
Yes, we had a meeting last Thursday in which we discussed, you know, revisions of policies pertaining to the community, and there are no more meetings scheduled for this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Bring it to our representative reports. IU Board, Mr. Cirillo.
Thank you. The Bucks County Intermediate Unit number twenty-two has summer employment opportunities. They are in need to continue to provide the services for their students. If you are interested, they have multiple opportunities available for teachers, paraeducators, and related service providers. All positions are eligible for a bonus. The summer programs offer educational services to students needing compensatory education before entering the next grade or in support of students with special needs. What a great way to make your summer profitable and rewarding. You can go to buckscountyiu.org and look up the job listings.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Brings us to the Neshamity Education Foundation. Mrs. Boyle.
The Neshamity Education Foundation met in person yesterday afternoon. They discussed plans for the first annual Neshamity Alumni Achievement Award, which will recognize and honor five Neshamity graduates who have distinguished themselves in their chosen profession or community service. If possible, a ceremony will be held in the fall. The NEF Board also awarded three scholarships of a thousand dollars each to Neshamity High School seniors for their post-secondary education. The students will be recognized at the senior awards ceremony on May 27. And our next meeting will be held on Monday, June 14, 4:00 p.m. at Maple Point Middle School, and the community is invited to attend and participate.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. PSB liaison is my report. Currently, the PSBA is working hard on the behalf of school districts at the state level to make sure the secured funding for our schools is not only maintained but hopefully increased as the state's budget comes into its final acts as it moves towards a resolution for June 30. So, we wish them well on the behalf of all our students and parents and residents of Neshamity. Technical school, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. A couple things that were talked about on April 26, 2021, Tech School Joint Board. Dr. Lee, Dr. Sam Lee of Ben Salem, gave us an update on the professional council that was held Monday, April 19, which they, of course, pandemic and COVID response to it was number one on the list. He just gave us an update of where they're all, all of the districts are. Dr. Pesky announced during his director's report that the VIP Pharmacy around the corner had reached out to Tech School to let us know that once sixteen and above students, children were allowed to get the vaccine, that they were available should Tech School choose to make use of that. I have the, out of the budget committee, that it was recommended that we, the Tech Joint Board vote on the budget, and that was voted on at the meeting. The 2021-2022 budget was approved by the Joint Board and sent out to the sending districts for their approval. Couple quick notes on some grants. We accepted the 2021 SLIP grant, known as the State Local Internship Program, that they fund the local workforce development board, gives us the amount of thirty thousand for May 3, 2021, through August 27, 2021. We got a Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Grant, known as the Gear Two Act One of 2021, in the amount of four hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars. That grant is in lieu of the fact that technical schools were not included in the first round of relief, COVID relief for educational districts throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So, that was good news. Pennsylvania Department of Education Bureau of Career Technical Education Supplemental Equipment Grant, it's always good to have money for equipment in a technical school. We received the grant of one hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars, which we have earmarked for a number of items in our shops. That concludes my report. Mr. Parentano, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. As always, always thorough with our technical school reports and the way you work on behalf of this district for to keep us all informed about what goes on there and your support of it is greatly appreciated. Thank you again. This will bring us to our second period of public comment. Is anyone in the audience which will approach the podium for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to, is there any board members want to present any future Hearing none, we'll move on to board comments. Dr. McGee, could you add any commentary this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Mr. Thomas, in earlier board comment, had a question about masks. The school, the Neshamity Health and Safety Plan had a position on masks way back in August, and basically it was to follow the directions of the Bucks County Department of Health. Since then, the governor of the Commonwealth has put a universal mask order in place, requiring masks, it's a lengthy order, but I think you get the idea because we've been living under it for a number of months. The board members themselves swore an oath to protect the, both the federal and the state constitution, and I, as a commissioned officer of the Commonwealth, did the same. So, we as a public school entity, a government entity, are bound by that governor's order and by our oath to follow the Constitution of the United States and of the Commonwealth. The governor, if I'm quoting right, believes said that he would lift that mask order when seventy percent of those eighteen and above were vaccinated. I don't think there's odds on it in Vegas, but I don't think we're going to get to seventy percent by the end of the school year, would be my guess. So, I'm going to guess the board and myself are going to be bound by that governor's universal mask order through the end of the school year unless the governor were to change that or some other form of that. If there's a particular issue with your child, there are ways to talk about that. I believe I have your number. I will give you a call tomorrow if you want to talk more. All right? Or after the meeting, if you're still here. Mr. Parentano, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGee. Are there any board members wish to have any commentary this evening?
I would just like to welcome Mr. Bowman to the cabinet. We look forward to working with you. So, welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go. Just a second. Mrs. Hollenbach, welcome. Welcome, Mr. Bowman. Also, I wanted to just talk about this last, earlier on this week, it was Monday night, last night, wow. The Neshamity music program is just, it never ceases to amaze me. The, they had a jazz on the lawn, and the two jazz bands at the high school were absolutely fantastic. I am a little biased. I do have, my son plays guitar in the jazz ensemble, and he was one of four seniors recognized in the band for their service. These guys had a really difficult year, as you can imagine. What do musicians like to do? They like to go out and they like to play. And usually they have tons and tons of concerts and competitions and things, and they really only got a shot twice this year. But they made it worth it. Sometimes it's not about the quantity, it's about the quality, and those guys put forth quite an effort. So, thank you to the band directors and the rest of the music department for making that happen. It was a wonderful night. The weather held up really nicely, and a great time was had by all. So, well done, and what a great way to end that part of the music year.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. I had seen that on Facebook, and it was excellent. Those kids did a great job. And you're right, it's a shame they didn't get more of a chance to show their talents this year, especially for those seniors that are moving on. Is anyone else on the board wish to have comment this evening? Mr. Allen, you have something?
Couple brief notes. I just wanted to thank once again, Mr. Devlin. I made mention of it the last meeting about the continued expansion of our special ed department, the three entities that we've appointed. Again, great job. Thank you much. And also, want to, again, thank the board for their continued support of Tech School. You send me there to represent you. I do my best. It's near and dear to my heart, as my father taught there. Some may not know that. But the fact that we're once again going to look at their budget and continue our association with that is good news, and thank you. Welcome, Jay, to the district. Looking forward to working with you. That's it.
Anyone else? Seeing, seeing none. I just also want to welcome Mr. Bowman to our district. We're looking forward to see your impact here in improving the education we deliver to our students and the resources we make available to them. And I know you can't wait to hit the floor and get running, and hopefully come September we'll be fully open and have all our activities and classes and clubs and all those great things that all the kids look forward to each year, and you'll be able to help us move that forward, and your influence in the STEM area, which we're looking forward to how you impact that here. So, welcome, and to your family, thank you as well. We plan to keep them many late hours, so. And I see his wife is like, great. So, thank you very much. I just want to remind the public that we are still broadcasting virtual meetings that you can watch at home. You can find them posted on the evening of the meeting at www.neshamity.org/meetings. Our next public board meeting will be on May 25, here in this auditorium at 7:00 p.m. And as previously mentioned, the last committee meeting for this year will be our Business Operations Committee on June 1, 6:30, in the board meeting room here at Maple Point. Otherwise, I'd like to get a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you very much.